Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the United States of America, Republic, and one nation, God.
All right, roll call. All members of council are present with Counselor Polling and Counselor McHugh via the phone. Approval of tonight's agenda. There was one addition. The appointment. Adding is on the consent agenda, the appointment of Josh Koch as the OMIC RND's Business Development Director as a liaison. The Economic Development Committee, sorry. Do I have a motion with the amendment?
So moved, the amendment?
Here's a, I hear a motion with amendment to the, the agenda is there a second? Hearing a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Public comments. Is there anyone that would like to comment on anything not on tonight's agenda? I've got Paul Fidrich. Welcome.
Paul Fidrich, Scapoose. Thank you, Mayor. I'm here to talk about actually timely subjects. Scapoose's identity. Who are we? What do we want to become? Urban renewal funds, which we just talked about or heard, the 50-year plan, ARP, funds appropriation, promotional videos from last week, attracting companies to our industrial sector, building a vibrant downtown, all topics facing our city today. All have been subjects of meetings recently, and they're all interconnected. It's all about branding of our town. Who are we? The Sandy example is quite interesting. If you guys have been around in Oregon for the last 20 years, you know Sandy was quite like us, 20 miles from Portland, and pretty nondescript. And then they decided, you know what? When they got their urban renewal funds, what are we all about? Gateway to Mount Hood, gateway to Mount Hood, gateway to Mount Hood. And they built a mountain town. They're not in the mountains, but they built a mountain town and a mountain aesthetic, and they rebuilt their town, very much like ours is that the buildings were disparate. There was no theme. There was junky ones here. There's whatever is there. And now it's a cohesive, unified downtown. It's beautiful. It really is. So you look at that and you go, you know, what could we do? I mean, what is our gateway to Mount Hood? What is our vision? You know, we worked on it, oh, sorry Pete, can't see you, during the centennial, and you know, it was about past, present, and future. And Pete and I worked on, okay, what's our future? And what are we all about? And we just kept getting stumped. I mean, who are we? And you know, what do we stand for? So it's just something that it keeps coming back with, how are we gonna, you know, where are we gonna put our resources at, you know? What's most important to us? If we had that nailed, that would help drive us to go in a cer- the certain direction, whatever we choose, whatever it is. So it's interesting, you know, Robbie came in here, Robbie Bacchus, a few weeks ago and said, hey, you know, why can't Scapoose have nice things, da-da-da? It was, it was actually, you know, it was an interesting point, and the city attorney said, well, jeez, you know, we're not Lake Oswego or whatever. We should look at towns like Malawa. You know, same population, actually pay a little less taxes than us. Well, they did rebrand. They rebranded around recreation. And they've been spending money toward, toward that. They have an off-street walking plan that they brought in consultants, the Alta Consulting Group. Instead of just doing sidewalks, whatever, they actually had a plan that said, hey, if I want to get from the school to this part of town, or the middle school to the high school, or to the, to a certain neighborhood. And they created a complete walking plan. Some of it is sidewalks, some of it's trails, whatever. This is a great thing. They put money toward a BMX park, a disc golf course, an aquatic center. Yes, they have aquatic center. What we've been talking about since 1970, more playing fields, more open space parks. And they've allocated their ARP funds accordingly. They've put over 150,000 already from the last RP into recreation updates. So again, they use their branding, or what they thought their town is to be, and help guide them. So, you know, we just talked about it is every time we, this brings, this comes up, we kind of go, geez, what's the most important thing to do for our town? Or how, what direction do we go? Infrastructure versus amenities. If we had that guiding light, I think it would really help out a lot. And it is going to be hard. But once it is finished, and once it's complete, it'll really help make everything easier for us. And I do like Peter's suggestion around exploring, we're not professionals. I think we need to hire somebody. I think we need to hire a consulting company to come in and, and work with the city leaders and, and help tell our story. I mean, create the emotional connection that we know we all have around this town, and that will drive what we want to do. What's our town all about? What businesses do we want here? What do we want tourism here? What's our tourism dollars going to be? Where are we going to put that money toward? So I really hope that, especially after today's discussion with the urban renewal funds, that we really make this a priority and put funding toward this. Because if we don't, we're going to end up spending money, I think, for not. I mean, we're going to spend quarter million dollars on the 50-year plan. Our vision should be part of that plan, you know? So how can we spend that money before we even have our vision? So I ask the city and the councillors to please take this, make this a very high priority. I have over 30 years' experience in branding. Nike, Fox Racing, Burton Snowboards. We were good companies, but it was really all about the brand. You know when you think Nike, I know what that is. I know what that is. And hey, you know what? When I think of Hood River, I know what that is. When I think of Astoria, I know what that is. I think we have that. I don't know what it is, but I think we can find out and really help drive our vision going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
Marissa Jacobs?
Hello. Thanks, Paul, for that. That was, that really kind of got to me. Who are we? What are we going to be? I think there's some good stuff there. Good evening. My name's Marissa Jacobs. Thank you, councillor, thank you, Mayor, and city's council and staff for allowing me to speak this evening. First, I'd like to thank you for continuing to listen to my comments. Even though we don't align, it brings about conversations that might not otherwise happen, and usually resulting in an outcome that is best for the citizens. Thank you. Second, I'd like to thank you for commencing an ad hoc committee for Grabhorn Park, Grabhorn Park. I'm excited to see the next draft version of the park, and thank you for reopening the bathrooms last week. Our walking group is whole again. Thank you for your efforts. So to close out 2021, my public comment is regarding the topic of contract policing by Columbia County. I've listened to the public comments, council discussion, and reviewed the presentation, and the question appears to be fair and timely for review. For the record, I do not have a fully formed opinion on the topic, yet I'm curious to learn how this proposal could or could not benefit our city. As elected officials, you accept it many responsibilities to govern the citizens of Scapoose. And two critical obligations bestowed upon you are to be good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars, as well as the safety of our community. It's been revealed over the course of the year that Scapoose's police department is understaffed, resulting in limited coverage to our town. Add in the additional comments from staff and council that the city is understaffed and overworked. So if this proposal can provide 24-hour police coverage to our, that our town deserves, save significant money, and remove workload from the city manager to focus on projects to improve the overall livability of our city, I think it's worth, a worthy topic for council to debate the merits before hiring a full-time police chief. If I'm asking these questions, other citizens are too. Mr. Mayor, last session, you stated that the county doesn't have capacity to serve Scapoose, and this statement may very well be true. And I would like to hear that question, as well as other questions directed to Sheriff Pixley himself during a work session for the public to hear. I urge you to uphold your obligation to your tax base, myself, and I'm asking you to include the proposal on the agenda for a working session with Sheriff Pixley in January 2022 to openly debate the merits of the proposal with each council member's questions and perspective on the record for the public to understand why this proposal is or is not beneficial for our town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Marissa. Sarah?
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Lisa Hoffman. I am Neil Hoffman's mom. And I've been a resident of Scapoose for over 20 years. And I would like to introduce my sister. She is on our board, Run With Neil board, and we want to talk about another one that happened.
Good evening, council. I would like to share with you what Run With Neil is about and the impact it will have on the city of Scapoose. Run With Neil was formed by Neil's family and community members to bring awareness to the mental health problems facing youth today. Neil Hoffman was a Scapoose High School junior who was kind, compassionate, and a highly skilled athlete who prided himself on being a good teammate and an exceptional friend. As you know, Run For Neil was a great success as part of the Scapoose Centennial. Funding from the run plus donations have gone toward creating mentorship programs between the middle school and the high school. We have sponsored students to attend camps that address topics such as mindset, puberty, nutrition, being intentional, and how to ask for help, giving students tools to improve coping skills. We have partnered with OSU's Damn Worth It, a nonprofit student-led organization committed to breaking down the stigmas surrounding mental health. Run With Neil has provided monies to build the first high school chapter at Scapoose High School. This partnership gives us access to resources geared towards meeting the mental health needs of students. Resources that have potential to be the most impactful are virtual resources that are readily available to address mental health concerns in the moment. Currently, it could take a person 12 weeks to a year to gain access to one visit with a mental health professional. As you can imagine, the opportunity to make an app, the opportunity to make an impact at that point is low. In the past several months, we have met with coaches, school officials, teachers, and most importantly, students in the Scapoose School District to assess the need for mental health resources. It is clear there is a significant deficit. Students we have spoken with have made it apparent that we must do more to meet their needs. It is difficult enough to ask for help, but can you imagine being brave enough to reach out and receiving nothing in return? The Surgeon General has gone as far as to call the mental health crisis for our youth the second epidemic since COVID. It is imperative that this need be addressed. Run With Neil is committed to raise funds to provide resources to kids, parents, teachers, coaches, and community members. This requires a long-term investment from this community. We believe this council has the potential to be a part of Run With Neil changing lives. After our very successful Run For Neil Centennial Run, we have been in the planning stages for making this an annual event. Last week, we learned that Scapoose has plans for a 2022 summer festival as the Treadway Events presentation made note of a 5K run without many details. We believe partnering Run With Neil with the city on the Scapoose Summer Event would best benefit our community. Our group was extremely successful in creating a well-organized event, raising money and awareness to the cause. We bring with us the resources and experience to make an even bigger impact going forward. The over 350 participants were largely made up of Neil's teammates, family members, and community members who are committed to our mission, and we continue to grow. Paul Fidrich, who ran last year's event along with our track coaches and volunteers, are ready to step up again next year. Run With Neil is asking the council to be a part of breaking down barriers and to support the mental well-being of the most important long-term investment we have in Scapoose, our kids. Instead of running our own standalone event, we believe partnering with the City of Scapoose Summer Festival would best benefit our community. Time is of the essence. The earlier we can begin planning, the better. I ask the mayor and city council to vote immediately to include Run With Neil into the 2022 Summer Festival. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well said.
All right, is there any other public comments? All right, seeing none, we will move forward onto the consent agenda, which is the appointment of Amanda Hanner, PCC College Success and Career Coach as a liaison to the Economic Development Committee, and Josh Koch, OMIC RND Business Development Director to the same committee. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Hearing a motion by Counselor Haugen is there a second?
Again.
Biting by Counselor Osowski, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. New business, contract for old Portland Road sidewalk infill project. Mr. Sukal?
Yeah, Mayor and council, good evening. So over this past year, city staff has been working with Kitteridge engineers to design infill of missing components to sidewalk, ADA compliance ramps, and addition of cross-ramps that will allow for pedestrians to cross from the west to east configuration at three locations. That design was done a couple of months ago. In an early November, we put this project out to bid. We received four bids back on December 2nd, ranging from 567 to 723,000, give or take. Our request of council tonight is to allow staff to enter into contract with Clark &amp; Sons Excavating to perform this work and answer any questions you have about the project if you need.
Any questions? Good work, Dave.
Thank you. It was a very collaborative effort.
Well, this would be the first project from the recent gas tax we passed.
Large project, yes. The wheelchair ramps on Sixth Street were the, were the actual first.
Okay, the first large project. Counsel President?
Do you feel comfortable sharing what you were kind of hoping for in terms of a number?
We were hoping less. We did budget 600,000 for this, so we knew that this was the range. We were hoping it would land somewhere in the mid to upper fours. But these numbers tell us that this is where the market is, the fact that three of them are within 5% of each other.
Sure.
And looking at the bid tabs reflect that these are just where the construction numbers are in this day and age. Couple of years ago, this probably would have been 100,000 less, give or take, but that's an unknown. And so, yeah, we do feel with the way the market is trending, these are what we're going to see moving forward, so.
Mr. Mayor? Counsel Osowski?
I appreciate all the work that went into this to make sure that we're fulfilling our goals. My only ask is that we do business preferably with other Oregon businesses.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Miller? Thank you, Dave. What will this bring our fund down to after this project is completed?
It's going to bring it down to very little. I mean, it's going to take us down to where we're going to be building back up over the next couple of years. We're receiving about 250 a year, give or take. I don't know where we're at to date because of trends. Yeah, we're seeing 250. So this will, this will deplete what we've accrued, and then we'll have to build back up over the next couple of years.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Do you have a motion?
Mayor?
Counsel Haugen?
I recommend that we move ahead with Dave's proposal.
Move the we.
I recommend that the council authorize city manager Raines to contact, contract with Clark &amp; Sons Excavating Corporation for the completion of old Portland Road sidewalk infill project as advertised in the amount of 567,219.12 ending the conclusion of the required bid protest period.
Hearing a motion by Counselor Haugen is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel President Grayson. Any discussion?
Ms. Mayor?
Counsel Miller?
I just want to make sure I'm reading this correctly, Dave. This, this includes a 10% contingency? Am I reading that correctly?
No, the 567 is their hard number from the bid.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, new business, annual goal updates. Ms. Raines?
Yes, Mayor and council. So we are back to go ahead and give you some quick updates on where we are with your goal list before you go back into goal setting for the next fiscal year. So in speaking with the mayor, I know that generally the request has been that we go through this as efficiently as possible, so if it's all right with you all, the idea would simply be that we touch on each. If there are questions, we'll take those questions. Members of staff that have worked on each of these respective goals is present, so they are available for questions. If there aren't any, then we can just keep moving down the list, and the hope is that we'd get perhaps through four, but it really just depends on obviously the amount of questions, so. Mr. Mayor, did you want to run through the list, or do you want me to call them out?
I can call them out.
All right, so, so goal one, the overarching goal is develop a vibrant, diverse local economy. So the first objective was 1A, continue to support OMIC's expansion.
Yeah.
All right. 1B, design downtown revitalization program. Done that one. 1D, support and monitor development of the Columbia Commerce Center. 1E, revise Resolution 1619, the Betterment Fund. 1F, update city's land use code for EC and C zones to allow brewpubs, micro breweries, micro distilleries, and micro wineries outright. 1G, work with partners to develop a robust economic development marketing.
I assume that this could just be branding in general, so it is.
It could be branding in general. I think to date, this has been more focused on marketing the industrial sites that are available. But, and then, you know, we have, we have been working with Dan Rocha just simply to bring consistency for the cities, just simply the city's logo and things. We, we noticed that over time, there were different fonts and logos that were being used. So the idea is that, you know, email signatures and those kind of things would become more consistent. So he's actually working with us right now to do that. A larger, more identity-focused branding project, obviously, I think is a little bit different than this and something we could in the future, but this is kind of in the focus. It's been these smaller things thus far.
In our annual goal setting sessions, that would be something that we want to put on that goal so that we could get moving on it. And it really should be a part of the 50-year plan.
Right.
I mean, I think that Mr. Fidrich was dead on, so. You're welcome.
All right. 1H, rename OMID to the Scapoose Innovation District or Park. I would note that it sounds like this is not going to move forward in any shape or fashion. I don't think they're going, I think they're actually moving away from having a larger title for the area. They think it's confusing, so I would, I would think it's highly unlikely this, this goes much of anywhere, based on the feedback I'm hearing right now. All right, so 1I, implement GAAP basis of accounting. So moving on to goal two, enhancing community livability. We have 2A, update public works design standards. 2B, update the rail corridor study. Can we go back to the public works design standard?
So Dave, it shows that with limited time for the staff to complete this, is there a need to move this forward? That progress is, I want to say, stalling or stagnant, but there's only so many people.
Yeah, this is a goal that's been on the list since before I got here, and I've actually learned a lot as this has gone on year after year, is we really are making progress. It's just taking longer. Right now, our current status is we're in the stormwater master plan. And that's one component is the updated standards. Chris has been working with Brown and Caldwell to get those modernized to current standards of what everybody else is kind of using and where they should be. So it really is moving forward. It's just, as we do these master plans, it's been kind of on pace and par with those. After the stormwater is done, I think we have some transportation stuff to review, and then it's just a matter of getting our drawings put together and things. But it is limited of staff time with everything going on that we can't really divulge into it anymore than what the master plan pace is allowing us to do, so. I'm not overly concerned that this is not getting done. It's just, it would be nice if it could go faster. Unfortunately, we're just are tied a little bit on it. Hopefully that makes sense.
Okay, so 2B, update rail corridor study?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry for my, my brief absence, but just a quick, I'm wondering if there was a typo on 1D where it listed on the fifth bullet point down, it listed the 140 gallons per minute for the, for the well. I thought that was 240 that we came in at.
It's one.
It's only 140, but it wasn't either.
I think this was the one where we required them on the development plan to do 240, but it only came out at 140, and we've made alternative plans, 233. But then there's, we've made other agreements with them to get to the 233, right?
Right, so.
It's all tied to phasing.
Correct. So this would be, this would be that they're meeting the requirements for phases one and two, and so soon that way we could actually, you know, have platted lots that would be available for sale. Then there would be the additional requirements that provide that other water on the later phases.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel President?
Can we make a request since we're talking about variety of items that Chris and Lori moved to microphone? For people listening in. Sorry, I don't mean to be bossy.
Thank you, Megan.
I would just clarify that the 140 gallons actually gets them through phase three. And then it's the phase four that, that they would need to make up that difference.
Thank you.
Any questions on the rail corridor study for 2B?
Well, it's moving forward with the ports still, right?
Right, yes, totally, surely. Okay, so 2C, promote community events. Scapoose Center, your celebration and signature event. 2D, develop a long-term comprehensive community vision or 50-year plan.
Alex, can we stop on, on 2C for a moment? You know, based on what Lisa Hoffman's comments made today, I'd kind of like to weave that in, that, into that annual event and in collaboration with, with the Run For Neil. That's, it's a, it's a real good foundation for the event, and it's, it's going to be popular, it's going to grow. So I can see a value in adding that into the, into the narrative here.
I also like the idea that it's an event that's raising money for a purpose, not just paying for an event, so. I was going to make the same recommendation at the end of the meeting, but it's been made now. I would really like to see that.
That had been the intention of staff. We actually, I, maybe I just misunderstood. We had thought actually she was going to come present on the same night. Treadway was going to come back to you with their modified proposal, and then show how they would and then show how they would actually be part of the event, so I, I didn't actually realize they were going to come tonight instead, but that was the intent.
Thank you. Oh, yeah.
Getting us, getting something going for next summer. So, this is why they, you know, when we hadn't really heard too much about what we were going to do yet, we started looking and saying, okay, what are the available dates for a run? So, we kind of pushed things forward, and that's why they came.
Can you provide those available dates to staff so that?
Because right now, they want to have the event in September, and that's why we were trying to wait until we brought Treadway back to finalize the date, because we don't have a date yet.
Right, so basically, we just superimposed the run schedule calendar, and I could work with whoever you want.
Yeah, please, please get them the information on which dates work best.
Who should I give that to?
I would work with Isaac right there, and so. Thank you, Paul.
So, any questions on 2D?
Oh.
2F, the sidewalk plan?
Looks like looks like we've done our, doing our first major project, so I'm excited.
Yes, yes, with the fuel tax.
Dave, when do you plan on coming back to council to identify next potential locations and needs areas? When are we ready for that?
Right after the first of the year, we're going to be having a discussion on that.
Great, thank you.
2G, annual one-on-one meetings with neighboring local leaders. Have, have been holding these and will, will continue to do so. I don't know if, I guess maybe one thing to think about for goal setting is, you know, do you want to keep just with the same pool? Do you want to add new agencies for discussions? All right, so, moving on to Goal Three, keeping Scappus one of the safest communities in Oregon, we have 3A.
I would just stress that we continue to keep this as a priority, especially during this transitional period.
Mr. Mayor, is this an appropriate time to talk about the elephant in the room and the continual conversation about contract policing?
I think the better time is during our goal setting, but yeah, we can, I mean. It's. Go ahead.
Well, I just feel that. I mean, I wasn't going to get into this now, but I can get into it in my comments later. It's just up to you.
Whatever you feel is. Progress report. Yeah. In that context.
So, wait till the end.
I think.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, in regards to 3A, during the goal-setting session, I thought that we had talked about potentially doing some sort of study to see if we were on track with our police force as far as the number of officers per thousand and making sure that we were consistent with whatever the state standard, or what, actually, I think it's a national standard is. Try, sorry, trying to read through this really quickly here. I don't see that in there. I mean, obviously, that would be an important thing to do after the new police chief is hired, but I just want to make sure that we don't lose sight of that, because I think that is important with Goal Number Three, which is, you know, keep Scappus one of the safest communities. We're not going to be able to effectively do that if we don't have the right manpower. Again, my point is just to make sure that we keep that in mind. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, anything else?
Okay, so I figured try to move through Goal Four, if that's still. All right, so Goal Four, this is develop a parks and rec system within 10-minute walk from all neighborhoods. 4A, the peace candle, protect and restore, and update the Welcome to Scappus sign.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel President.
Recently, there was some conversation on a social media platform regarding the maintenance of the candle, et cetera. I can't recall, you know, luckily on this platform, Anna from the Spotlight had made reference to an article written about our, you know, agreement with this development that's nearby. We are waiting until what point then address the candle, just, just for the public to know.
We're actually, actually really getting started on improving it now. We are getting some quotes. We've talked to Michael Curry a bit on some ideas from him. We plan on actually coming and presenting that more formally to you all very soon. The goal would be to have it completed by summer, because that's when we believe that they're going to get their temporary certificate of occupancy for the apartments, and in the agreement we have with them, the easement agreement, that's what we said we would do, is make sure that it is looks nice essentially by the time they are ready to rent their apartments. So, we're actually just taking steps to work on that right now. We were going to come to you all and just chat a real quick about some design and just kind of the final aesthetic look that we could end up with.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alex, and can you speak closer to the microphone in the future? Like I'm the teacher here.
You are the boss in the room.
I thought it was the teacher.
Yours aren't bosses.
All right, so 4B, develop the Grabform Property Conceptual Plan. 4C, support Trail to Till.
You hold on just one. Thank you.
So, 4C, support Trail to Tillmac Project. 4D, community pool, determine construction, operation, and maintenance costs. 4E, identify park property on the east and or south side of the city.
So, Alex, just a quick update on the Cat Head property, that, has that been?
Still not an actual lot.
Okay.
So, it hasn't been transferred to the city.
What property was, I couldn't hear what Joel said.
That, parcellet shape, kind of like a cat head out by the new, yeah, Commerce Center.
Thank you.
Right, so that is Goals One through Four.
Mr. Fidrich.
One thing that kind of fell off the list, which we had, at the Parks and Rec Committee had asked for, but it was a difficult thing to facilitate, was the shared use amenities agreement between the school district and the city, which would be enable an actual formal agreement that many other cities have around that basically say there are certain amenities, fields, et cetera, that will be shared, and here's, here's the process in which we will share them. That was on our goal list, and I don't know if it.
Is that from a year ago, or is that?
No, that was just a few months ago.
Okay, so, yeah, those are going to be incorporated into, brought to us during the next.
So, those are presented to council when they do their goal-setting session retreat in February?
Okay, so.
And that's going to be, yeah, that's going to be definitely one of our goals.
Is an update and status update on the goals they adopted for last year.
I see, okay.
So, they, so they receive these updates, they receive recommendations from committees, then they go to, into their goal-setting session and actually decide what they want from those, and then adopt them, and then we plug them into the next budget.
Got it, okay, I apologize. I'm glad we, just wanted to get that out here, though. Thank you.
We agree with you, though. I do anyways.
Mr. Mayor.
To President.
I actually just stepped out to the school board meeting to give just like a general comment as the liaison between the school district and school board, without making firm recommendations, et cetera, just general overviews on our discussions between them and us on different topics this year. I did bring that up, that our Parks and Rec Committee was interested in that. Looking forward to the conversation continuing to the new year, et cetera, so they were publicly made aware of that this evening.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I have a question to you.
Okay.
Alex, I'm sorry I didn't ask this when we were here, but under Goal Three, 3A, at the bottom, I totally missed this. The city has started a wage study for all police officer positions. Is there any sort, can you elaborate at all, or is that just to?
We're, we're just, essentially, we've brought on a consultant, and they are looking at other similarly sized cities, looking at wages and their benefits, and basically, you know, looking to assess whether or not we are competitive with other similarly situated cities.
Okay, is there any timeline on that?
So, I, they told me about eight weeks, and so I was hoping to have it by January. Really, the idea too was to have it so that you'd, you'd have that information when the ARPA fund discussion comes back around, so we have that scheduled for the two work sessions in January. So, we'll, we'll see. There's not a guarantee, but that's what they tentatively told me.
Thank you.
So, on infrastructure, I guess that's the next meeting. But with the, there's the ARPA funds, but there's also a bunch of infrastructure money coming our way. Are we coming, you know, from Washington DC on the new infrastructure plan? Are we ID, looking at those and thinking of what we can go for to get money on roads and water and sewer?
Are you talking in addition to the 14 million we've already secured?
Yeah, I'm talking about the new monies that are coming down from the recently passed Build Better Back Bill. That's the right, yeah.
We have not had much internal discussion about that as of yet.
I would hope that we engage with the leagues, people who are putting out information quite a bit, and Peter?
We usually wait until we get preliminary treasury guidance on that, and so that's which is generally, it's about a 40 to 50-page-long document, which is what we've seen in, in the past. The alternative is to read through. Finding the reconciled bill is super easy. There have been a lot of moving targets there, so I think we're probably going to, we'll probably wait till we get that guidance, which is, comes out like months before we get the money.
Yeah.
And then, to the extent that there's ambiguity, that's when we kind of go into the bill itself and look the, if there's that sort of clarity in there.
As I was more understanding that the money, we weren't getting money sent directly to us, but it'll probably be a competitive grant program through the state.
It, it probably, there, there were elements of the last one that were that, that way, too. I mean, that's the 10 million that we got, those were separate state legislature-funded dollars. I would expect that there'd be a certain amount just for the infrastructure, and then there'd be that competitive element where, you know, we can compete or.
I just know that in 2009, we did quite well with placing the sidewalks, upgrading the sewer plant, and building Avlet Crossing, which gave us Buy Mart, Les Schwab, Goodwill, the apartments, and Old Tomos Pizza, so I mean, we were smart then, and I think that and we were out ahead, so I just want to, you know. I see they're giving out money so that we have projects on a list. Let's make sure we've got projects on that list that we can go after.
So, I mean, we've been, if you look at the, the legislation that, where they put out where we got the 10 million in projects, if you look at the dollars we've gotten per capita on a per capita basis, other than there's some small rural counties that got funds for a new courthouse, other than those, I think that we, I mean, we are punching well above our weight on, on getting those state grant dollars.
We don't want that to end either.
Well, we, the goal is to continue doing that.
Thank you. All right, announcements, a calendar check. Our next city council meeting is Monday, January 3rd, with a work session at 6:00 PM, council meeting at 7:00. And then, the second council meeting in January is on January 18th, a Tuesday work session and budget committee meeting at 6:00 PM, and city council at 7:00 PM. City offices are closed on the 17th of January for Martin Luther King's birthday. This Thursday, we have an Economic Development Committee meeting at noon, Parks and Rec Committee meeting at 6:00 PM. City offices will be closed on Friday, December 24th, and on Monday, December 27th, as well as December 30th and December 31st. Alex, do you have anything?
Yes, Mayor and Counsel, just real quick, as your retreat is scheduled for February 12th, we do have a consultant we'll be working with, and in the near future, she's going to be reaching out to each of you. She's actually wanting to do quick one-on-ones with you, just to have some preliminary discussion on your goals and what you'd like to get out of that session. So, Susan, Isaac, and I will help get, make sure you all get scheduled for that, but just so you know, it's coming. That's it.
Alex, a question on the retreat. When, Dave, I talked with Dave a while back, and we talked about the possibility of holding the retreat up at the water plant. There's a nice open space, we've got, and it kind of, it's a, it's kind of a nice to look at the actual infrastructure now in the context of our, of our goal-setting. I'm just wondering if that would be an option, and I don't know if Dave followed up on that or not, but.
I passed that information along that you had mentioned.
Chatted about it a little bit. We also discussed just generally doing some tours of the facilities, if that was of any interest. We can certainly, about that.
As long as it's ADA accessible, we can have the, we can have the work session there.
Chief.
Mayor Counselor, I just want to give you an update on Donut Day. It was, we couldn't ask for better weather. It was pleasant.
Never rains in Scappus.
It doesn't.
With sunshine.
But overall, it was a great success. We brought in over 700 pounds of food for the food bank that was donated, plus $1,045, so I want to give kudos to Timmy Sue for organizing this, and her and Susan for going at up at 5:00 in the morning to go pick up a lot of donuts, so. Yep.
Q. Does any of our other staff here have any updates that they'd like to do?
So, you're about two hours ahead of what the last meeting.
Yeah.
Don't jinx us.
Yeah, thanks for that.
All right. Counselor McQ.
I'd just like to say thank you to our citizens who made the comments today, the Hoffman family, and Marissa Jacobs and Paul Fidrick. I thought all three of them did a fantastic job and gave us some insight into what I think is some good work by the, for the community, and, you know, not sure where all that's going to take us, but I appreciate their input.
Josh Bowing.
As this is our last meeting before the holiday, happy, I have a happy holiday for everybody. Hopefully, everybody has a safe one. I'd also like to thank staff for all their hard work and everything that they are doing. You guys have done a phenomenal job, and we, I really appreciate you.
Counsel Miller.
First, I just want to point out that I think I may be the only one that's missing a name tag on the back of my, I, I have a feeling that it's because Susan's holding it over my head until I give her a picture. So, I'm not the only one. There's a curve there, so I can quite see. But I always have to look just to make sure I'm not Josh, you know.
Yeah, I have to remember who I am.
Yeah.
But that says I'm a council, so.
I do get lost in my thoughts sometimes, so that would be helpful. Just kidding. So, as we close the year out here, I do want to just give a sincere thank you to staff. I feel like we've accomplished a lot through this year. The Centennial event was amazing. I still have visions of you, Isaac, running around like nonstop, like, I mean, I, not enough thanks can go to you for that. The, the $14 million that we received for infrastructure, I think that was just an amazing accomplishment, especially for the size of our city, and so I just want to make sure that I definitely say thank you from the bottom of my heart for this community, for everything that you guys have done and continue to do. And I look forward to a very positive and proactive 2022 as well.
I'd like to echo Counselor Miller's comments. Also, you know, we went through the process of hiring a new city manager. We're in the process of hiring a police chief. There's a lot of big things happening in Scappus, and when I talk to people on like the county level, even the state level, we're known for a lot of positives, and that feels really good to. I'd like to echo Counselor Miller's comments, also, you know, we went through the process of hiring a new city manager, we're in the process of hiring a police chief, there's a lot of big things happening in Scappus, and when I talk to people on like the county level, even the state level, we're known for a lot of positives, and that feels really good to just have the privilege to be up here and work with you guys, I, I hands down trust every one of you and your expertise, and you make decisions we have to make a lot easier because of the amazing work that you do, so. I will never claim to be an expert in any of the things that you do, so, trust you 100%, thank you. Um, I have to admit, I'm a little shaky, I, I get a little flustered, but sometimes things have to be said and that isn't always easy, and unfortunately, we've come to a point where, you know, this conversation about contract policing, we're talking about people's lives here, people sitting in this audience who give day in and day out their literal, actual life for the people that live in this community, and I think that if there's going to be a conversation about outsourcing the work that they do, granted, technically, their job would remain, is what, you know, people think, that's not always the case, some people like to come in and they like to clean house, and I would imagine that that is a very vulnerable and scary feeling for the people that we employ and that we trust, and to sit up here and have conversations without involving the people that actually do the work is unfortunate, it's actually a little bit cruel, and I, I'm, I'm sorry that some things are being said or suggested that affect your livelihood, and you haven't, you know, had any sort of say or input about it, I, I don't mean to point you out, but you're here today and I appreciate you, I have a feeling you're here for a reason, so thank you. You know, I don't claim again to be an expert in anything, I don't know what the sheriff's department looks like, you hear things, you see things, you listen to the inside scoop, who knows, but unfortunately, I had to pull out Chapter 2.04 of our code that we just approved as a council, and the amount of highlighting that occurred due to recent actions taken by Counselor Haugen literally has me shaking at this moment in time. So, this is going to be a minute, but as a reminder to everybody who serves on council, that if you're taking a position that has not been adopted by this council as a body, that you should disclose that information, your personal opinion, and not take it as the position of the council, again, I don't know the conversations people are having in public or with other people, but just as a reminder. Representing the city, if a member of the council appears as a representative of the city before another governmental agency, which conversations are occurring with other governmental agencies about this topic, to the media or an organization to give a statement of an issue, the member may only state the official position of the city as approved by the majority of the council, there has never been a conversation or an agreement by this body to look into this topic or agree that we should look into this topic. Personal opinions, if a member of the council appears in their personal capacity before another governmental agency, the media or an organization to give a statement of an issue, the member must state they are expressing their own opinion and not that of the city before giving their statement, again, I don't know what's happening behind closed doors or in public settings, however, again, these are just reminders. So councillors shall have authority only to act as part of the council and shall not have individual authority to bind the city or direct the actions of city officers or employees. Sometimes emails are sent or conversations are had that imply that staff should take certain actions, councillors individually cannot do that. I'm going to skip ahead on a few of these other things that I've highlighted. I want to point out the mayor and defer some of these next actions to him. The mayor shall attempt to resolve the matter and prevent future violation by contact with the offending councillor, a councillor found by the council to have violated this chapter may be publicly reprimanded by the council. And lastly, the council agenda is ultimately approved by the mayor, so sometimes there are allegations that happen in this chambers that staff are feeding us information or only tell us what we need to know or are making decisions behind closed doors, that has been said in public comments, that is absolutely not true, he is the final say of what goes in front of the public, so if there is somebody that needs to be called out, it shouldn't be the staff, and it's, it saddens me that they literally bend backwards, spend hours of their time doing what we ask them to do. It also says and highlights here that if a councillor is requiring significant time, questions, significant time or resource or resources, two hours or more from staff members, then, that would normally require outside of your daily, your daily tasks, members of council shall normally share, like, there, there needs to be an approval by council before certain councillors can ask you to do things or take up certain amount of your time, again, these are just reminders. And I go to the city council team agreements. Information available to one council member will be available to all in a timely manner, there has never been a time in my personal experience, again, I'm not speaking for everyone here, that I have found something out from staff directly that another councillor already knew, and I didn't have to go, well, how come you told him or her, but you didn't tell me, not once, however, there have been multiple occasions where a councillor or councillors have invited people to speak in front of us, county commissioners, they've asked the sheriff to come in, that didn't end up happening, but we've been blindsided, and those people who have been invited to come in were blindsided, not understanding the full information about why they were here, or talking about projects in a really obscure way, and we have no idea what's supposed to be happening in front of us. I just want to remind us that in our council agreements, it says that we will work as part of one team with the staff, we need to trust the staff to implement our council goals, we just reviewed four of them tonight. Questions need to be provided in advance to the city manager, so if we have a special interest or a curiosity or something we want to know more about or something we want to look into, it goes to her, and then it's going to make sure that it goes to you. There have also been occasions where certain councillors meet with other individuals in public settings, and they have been heard to be speaking about staff in negative ways, that immediately breaks our team agreement and the chapter that I just read from our code, but again, these are just reminders to those of us that sit up at this desk and how we present ourselves to the public. With that, I wish everyone a Happy New Year and Happy Holidays, I can't say it enough to all of you employed by us as, as city staff, you are what make us us, so thank you.
Counselor Haugen.
Thank you, in the, in the spirit of the holidays, I'm just going to note that, you know, public service can be a noble undertaking, it can be, and the, and the operative word is can be, and so I'd like, I would like everyone to think about that in, in, in the context of, of, of time now and time going forward. Then I would like to wish everyone a wonderful holiday period, and you have a special shout out and thank you to the Historical, Scappus Historical Society for putting on a marvelous event, and I saw Isaac there on Saturday night, that was phenomenal, and I'm hoping that we can continue that, because that was just a really cool event. On the subject of contract policing, that Pete and I brought up a couple of sessions back after a conversation with, with Sheriff Pixley, and then with the follow-up from Robbie Backus and this evening with, from Marissa. I have done due diligence, I think, as a, as what I feel as a steward for our community, where I have an obligation and a, and a duty to do what I think is something we should, in the best interest of the community, I've, I've talked with staff, I've talked with councillors, and, you know, we, we have to put this into that context, you know, we don't make decisions, but we do have to do fact-finding, we do have to do our due diligence as stewards for the community, you know, our public safety, our taxpayer dollars are, are something that we are obligated to deal with and look into, and so when Pete and I talked with the sheriff over his proposal, you know, we thought, you know, this is worth looking at, and that's why we brought it up a couple sessions ago, and so that to me makes common sense, and then we follow up with the community, and why not look at this at this particular juncture, and I, I mentioned to Alex, and I think she shared this information with Megan, otherwise she wouldn't know it, that I contacted the Troutdale City Manager, I contacted the Plaskanai City Manager, and I contacted the Cornelia City Manager, all of whom employ contract policing, and the, the Cornelia City Manager was also a retired Beaverton mayor, so he's got some expertise in this area, and he, his comment to me was that, you know, when he went into this, he, he saw the value of contract policing, for the reasons that we would find out, I think, if we actually studied it and looked into it, and when he found the value was that, it was many-fold, not to mention just the money, but just the service, the professionalism, and, and not to demean or discredit any, one sense of our, our fine police force in Scappus, but to look at this as a option, you know, and what his comment was, that this is the time to do it when you don't have a police chief, once you hire a police chief, then, yeah, it's a kind of a moot point, and so if you don't consider it at this point, then, then, then what's, what, there's no, there's no reason that you may think about it, and if we take, if we look, actually look at it, maybe we'll say, no, this doesn't make sense for Scappus, and I caught that from the discussion at the last meeting, maybe it doesn't make sense, maybe, maybe Columbia County doesn't work for Scappus, but let's listen to the people, or let's listen to Sheriff Pixley and invite them in for a work session before we actually go through the process of hiring our next police chief and find out if we want to look at this or not, and then you might also think about the city managers that are using contract policing and find out if there are any that don't like it, I haven't found any yet, and so, so that tells me something that maybe there's merit into looking at this, and the police, and the police forces are happy with it, the ones, the, the deputies, the ones that stayed on, they're happy with it, I, I, that we could invite the police union into the equation, but let's, let's be, let's be complete and thorough in our process here and not, not shortchange our, our options and possibilities, to me, it's just, it's, we really have a duty as, as community stewards to look at this, and so my motion tonight is that I move.
I'm sorry, we're not, we're not in a business and this was not on the agenda, there's no motions available during your comments.
Okay, so, we, my comment then is that, we, and I was, I was hoping we would do this earlier, but my comment then is that we, at the earliest possible juncture before we finalize the hiring of our new police chief, that we at least give a look at Sheriff Pixley's proposal and actually dive into this and see if this is going to be a good fit or not, what is wrong with information, information is good, and the more information you have, the better off and the better decision-making you can make, so please, please consider this for the good of the community and for transparency and for all the reasons that we've already talked about, thank you.
Counselor Soski.
First, I just want to apologize for my voice this evening, I was at a soccer match over the weekend and unfortunately lost it, so.
The match for the voice?
Yeah, a little bit of both, ooh, that stung, thank you.
Bad.
Yeah.
As we end 2021 and move into 2022, I just want to take a moment to thank the citizens of Scappus, one, for their faith in our decision-making and our, this body that represents their voice, 2020 was obviously a very difficult time for a lot of us, and so as we move through 2021, more and more opportunities existed for citizens to be participants, specifically with the Grabhorn Ad Hoc Committee, having more and more voices of our citizens come into and provide public testimony or comment, and for those that we know that are tuning in through our streaming of the city council meetings, so with that, I just want to say thank you again for your vote of confidence. Additionally, I'd like to say Happy Holidays and a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to everyone in our community, and I, I appreciate city staff and all that you do, so with that, I appreciate the opportunity, Sheriff.
Thank you. It was the last meeting of the year, good opportunity, normally, like the last couple of years before COVID hit, we would take the last meeting and we'd have a thank you dinner for our city staff, I believe it was at Stopple one year and at Ichabod's another year, we're not able to do that with COVID, which is unfortunate, because it was always a great time to get together with staff and, and reminisce about the past year and the camaraderie that you build, and, you know, the, the pandemic has really stifled that camaraderie for a lot of people, because we can't have the same types of meetings, I actually had a chance to, over the police department today and, you know, speaking with officers, and it was nice, I hadn't done that in a while, because we're usually masked up and we weren't all hesitant, but, you know, I don't know, I got my booster shot last week, so, feeling a little more confident. But thank you for all the work you do, I mean, everything we do is, we're trying to do the best thing for the city at all times, and, you know, some of us have very good knowledge in different parts of the, the world, and, you know, and we take that to our place, and so, really, I'm just surprised that it's only after eight, like, Monday Night Football is still actually going on, and we're about to be done with the meeting. But I would wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, and have a Happy New Year, we'll see you next year, and I look forward to continuing to make Scappus a better and better place, and I appreciate the comments, like I've always said, you know, I appreciate having citizens come in and make comments, there have been times where it's been years and we don't get people coming in, and you're, it feels better that you've got active community members coming in, because when you don't, you're, you're, you're batting blind, you know, you're, you're depending on your interpersonal relationships with people in the community, and that might just be a bubble that you're in and not what everyone's thinking, so when people come in and they comment, they make, help us make better government, and I, I, I appreciate it a lot, and so thank you for coming in, and I know Paul and Marissa, you guys are here quite a bit, and I really do appreciate it, you know, like I said, that you have changed my minds on topics, you've moved the dial on issues before the city, so it's important, I, I won't lie, I wish there were more citizens like you guys that came in and let their voices be heard on all range of topics, because it makes us better, so thank you very much.